Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. I am Linda Bardier, the interim Director of Communications, and I am here on behalf of the Board of Education, our President, Dr. Scott Wyatt, Vice President Danny Tillman, Mary Ellen A. Grande, Felicia Alexandra, Myra Sabios, Miki Chahusky, and Abigail Rosales Medina, and Superintendent Ariano. Let's give them a round of applause. Today's a special event as we conduct the swearing-in ceremony of the 2023 Student Board Members, and we are so pleased to have the support of our community with us today. I'd like to give special greetings to our county School Board Member and former SBCUSD Board Member, Dr. Gwen Rogers. She is here with her colleague, Norm Nunez. We're grateful for the support from the City of San Bernardino, and we thank Mayor Helen Tran for joining us. And Councilwoman Kimberly Calvin is with us as well. Special thank you also to Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., representing the 5th District. And I also would like to extend a thank you and a welcome to Arlaea Galicia, representing the Mexican consulate de Leon Villar. Assemblymember Eloise Reyes Gomez's rep is here, Prince Ogdi Dipa. State Senator Rosalia Ochoa Bow has her representative here, Michael Glouster. And Congressman Aguilar's rep, Birdie Aguilar, is with us as well, so let's give a thank you to her. And now that all of those official welcomes are out of the way, let's also welcome and thank the parents of our student school board members. Let's give the parents and family members a warm welcome. I would like to yield the microphone to our school board president, Dr. Scott Wyatt, and he is here on behalf of his colleagues to share some remarks. So, Dr. Wyatt?
Well, thank you, Ms. Bardier, and always a wonderful introduction and welcome to everybody here. I also want to thank all our colleagues, our elected officials, that have joined us today to honor our students. Want to start, obviously, by congratulating all of our students today. Such an unbelievable day. This is really important, special day for us as the Board of Education, just so you know. We are super excited. It's been since about 2020 since we've had student school board members, and we had this little thing happen this last three years called COVID. I think, you know, we're happy that that's getting behind us, but we're even more happy that our students are joining us up here on the dais. So, again, congratulations to you. Congratulations, as we heard from Ms. Bardier, to your family members as well. So, we're going to meet the students soon, but can we have our family members stand up real quick so we can acknowledge you as the family? So, if you're family of the student board members, can you please stand up so we can acknowledge you tonight, so we know who you are? Wow, that's exciting, and, you know, your support as the family and the parents and the guardians and the relatives, I mean, it's invaluable to us as the board members and educators. You know, it's difficult to do on our own, so the partnership that we share with you is critical to the success of our students, and they are our students, so we appreciate that. Let me put my glasses on, I couldn't know most of this. Well, it's important that you're here because that's why we are here, right? As elected board members, our job is to ensure that we do everything possible that you, so you succeed in life. But most importantly, one of the things we don't often hear is the student voice. So, hearing your voice, your opinion, your thoughts, your feelings is going to be really, really important to us up here as board members. Now, we get a lot of information, often it's written, a lot of times it's from executive cabinet, from the superintendent, but most importantly, we want to hear from you. We need to know what we're doing well, but more importantly, we need to know what we're not doing so well. We need to know what we need to improve. We need to know what it is you want to take you to the next level to succeed as young adults, to get to that next step in college, or career, or both, eventually career, right? But it's important. So, when you're here and you represent our student body, we have a large student body, right? About with our charter schools, we have approximately 50,000 students. So, you are representing that many young men and young women in our community. You're also representing our future, so please know that as well. So, I want you to have strong voices, informed voices, loud voices when you're up here. Do not be afraid to speak when you're up here on the dais. Some of you, I think, are naturals at it, others might need a little bit more coaching and encouragement, but we'll soon find out. But again, I just want to welcome you all, congratulate you all on behalf of the Board of Education, my colleagues here that are here tonight, and some are not because some are on this unbelievable tour right now, so they couldn't be here tonight because I know they would be. But I am going to pass it over to my wonderful colleague, Ms. Miki Chahusky. So, let's welcome her. Thank you.
As Miki does her welcome, we will be asking the student school board members to come forward and introduce themselves in the microphone.
So, thank you, everyone, for being here. As usual, Dr. Wyatt took some of my remarks, but I want to thank everybody for being here as well. The Student Board Member Program is a really important and exciting program. It is actually a program that is in ed code, so it is important to the state of California, and it is in our board policy as well. And so, one of the things, though, that they usually kind of talk about is one board member. But as we came back from COVID and we started looking at what other entities were doing, including our city council, we decided that we were going to have one student board member for every adult board member on our board. And as we rebuild our program post-COVID, we're really looking to the students to help us build the program, both using what is in ed code in our policy, but also what meets the needs of our students in our schools. We want to make sure that the voice of every student is heard, from the straight-A, 4.0-plus student, to those that are struggling either academically or socially in our schools. We need to know, and the only way we're going to find out is by having both our student board members and our Student Leadership Advisory Council advise us on what we need to do as board members. So, they're going to have a very busy year. They're going to be meeting a week after next, just before school starts, for a day and a half, both to learn boardmanship, but also to also kind of help us understand and for them to understand, kind of work together with the board, because they're going to be meeting with the board for a full day, on how we're going to operate this year as we move forward. Some of this is going to be building from the ground up. You guys are going to, you know, we're going to be learning as we're going. We may not get everything right. They will not all be at every board meeting because they have school and responsibilities, so they will be dividing up, and they'll be deciding who's going to be attending which meetings, and so they will take turns coming and sitting in the meetings and providing input for the evening. Our evenings can go late sometimes, so sometimes they may have to say, "Mm, homework calls, I got to go." But we understand that as well, because it is, that is their first responsibility, their schoolwork and their school responsibilities is still number one, even as we hear their voice. So, it's going to be a very long and exciting year. We're proud to have seven, well, we, we had so many wonderful applicants, it was really, really difficult. And so, we chose both regular board members and alternates because we felt that all the students would represent our district and their schools proudly and very well. So, you're going to get to meet all of them tonight. We'll be swearing in the seven, and should one of them, due to school or other obligations, not be able to complete their term, then the alternates will step right in. They'll know everything that's going on, they're going to be a part of, you know, everything that we do, so that they are able to step right on in and fulfill their duties, and we won't miss a beat. So, we are proud of every one of you. You are all absolutely amazing, and we can't wait for the audience to meet you and to hear your voices, you're up here. So, as I call your name, some of you, the first seven on this side and the other two on this side for me, okay? All right. Oh, before I do that, sorry, I like look at my notes, right? I have to thank a couple of people who really helped us get to this point. First, I want to thank our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Sandra Rodriguez. She does our, she is in charge of our Student Services Program, and the Student Board Member and Student Leadership Advisory Councils are under her leadership, and so without her guidance and support, we wouldn't be here today, so I really want to honor her. I want to honor my board colleague, Mary Ellen Abeliz Grande, who also helped us to this point in getting, getting the program started. And then, last but not least, I need to thank our board, who has supported our crazy idea of seven board members and everything we've wanted to do so far. And I want to thank our Principal on Assignment, Mr. Kenneth Martinez, both childhood friend and the person who's going to really be working hand in hand with our student board members this year. So, thank you, Mr. Martinez. One last thing before I introduce, one of the points of the Student Board Member Program is growing leaders, and that's something that San Bernardino has done really well. Mr. Martinez went to San Bernardino schools. I went to San Bernardino schools. Myra went to San Bernardino schools. Mr. Tillman, who's up there, he's here, he's just in a box over there, he went to San Bernardino schools, and so did our mayor, Helen Tran, also went to San Bernardino schools. So, you all could be the next leaders of San Bernardino, and we're really looking forward to, to see what you accomplish. So, let's meet them.
Dr. Rogers went to San Bernardino schools. I didn't want to leave her, I didn't want to leave her out. I know she was looking around, so I had to make sure, once a cardinal, always a cardinal got her, shout out.
Once a cardinal, always a cardinal. Oops. And Ms. Grande's children went to San Bernardino schools, so we have a strong connection. Actually, so did Dr. Rodriguez, also went to San Bernardino. See, we're all, so we grow leaders, that's what we say, we grow our own. Okay, so, without further ado, Anna Victoria Chavez, come on up, congratulations. Antonio Hernandez Nunez. Daisy Rojo. Crystal Scott. Tatiana Eden Ochoa. And Jimena Preciado. Camelia Elzatma was not able to be with us tonight, her family is on vacation, but we're really excited to have her join us as soon as she can, and she'll be sworn in at her first board meeting. All right. I think I turn it back over to you, although I will, when, for the swearing-in, I will be passing you the mic in a moment, you'll know when, and you're going to state your own names, okay? One.
Thank you, Mrs. Chahusky, and now I'd like to introduce our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Dr. Sandra Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. I am so proud of all of these young ladies and one gentleman, so we're going to recruit more gentlemen. And they have just done a tremendous job in our Student Leadership Advisory Committee and have learned so much about the district, learned about budget, learned about programs, learned about wellness, and our wonderful ambassadors and wonderful examples of the students that we have in San Bernardino. Quality is what we have here today, and a wide range, right? A wide range of activities and backgrounds, and that's what we're, we're about, right? Here in our school district, we have kids who have super high GPAs, and we have ones who just, you know, are getting their work done, but maybe not getting those As. But they matter too. Everybody matters in San Bernardino. So, with no further ado, we are now going to do your oath, so please raise your right hands, okay? And like Ms. Chahusky said, she's going to run around, and you guys are going to state your name when she gives you the microphone, okay? Ready? So, I'm going to, I'm going to be giving you some instructions, and then you're just going to repeat after me, okay? So, I...
I, what's your name?
State your name.
Anna Victoria Chavez.
Antonio Hernandez.
Daisy Rojo.
And Jeanette Rosenbloom.
Crystal Scott.
Silvana Vasquez.
Oh, well, don't we have, there are alternates, okay. Do solemnly swear, repeat, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and I'm going to invite the Board of Education to please come down and join the students so we can get a formal picture of our board members and our new student board members. And while our board members are making their way down, ladies and gentlemen, check your pockets. Some keys were found in the back of the room, so if you're missing a set of keys, check your pockets, and I believe someone in the back has them. I also, as the board members make their way forward, I want to thank our County Superintendent of Schools, our mayor, State Senator Rosalie Ochoa Bow, Bow, sorry, oh, Bow, let's see, and of course, Assemblymember Reyes's office, Supervisor Joe Baca's office, and Congressman Aguilar's office. We have a ton of certificates that the students will be presented, so we also have gifts from the Board of Education that the students will receive. So, I wanted to, let's give a round of applause to our elected officials who brought certificates for the students. Ms. Borsek is doing her best to balance out a Pulitzer Prize photography-winning picture. Once everyone is in place and we take this picture, we will shake things up by asking our elected officials to come forward as soon as this picture is taken. Please don't move. I'm going to ask the elected officials and their representatives, as well as our Mexilen consulate representative, to please come forward, and Karina will just fill you in While the students pose, they will also have an opportunity to take a picture with our district photographer in the back of the room as they collect their certificates and gifts. So, the family pictures with the students will also take place in the back of the room Also, while we're posing, I would like to send a special thank you to the Student Leadership Advisory Council, SLAC, under the leadership of Dr. Sandra Rodriguez and with the support of Mr. Ken Martinez. I also want to thank our Board Secretary, Karen Cunningham, she's worked very hard on today's program, as well as the team from Communications and Community Engagement. Also, can't forget Nutrition Services because the refreshments are absolutely delicious, so let's thank all of those supporting partners. And at 5:31, we have completed the student swearing-in ceremony. Karina is asking the students to go to the back to receive their certificates and their gifts and do their own photo session at the selfie wall.
All righty, folks, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. So, welcome to everyone that is here for our board meeting. I see we have a few guests left out there, so good to see you joining us, and I know we have celebration continuing in the back for our student board members, so we're super excited about them. So, we will move forward to the Pledge of Allegiance 2.2, and we are going to have Ms. Sabios lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Okay, let's put our right hand over our heart and ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of its individual individuality and justice.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. We will move on to 2.3, Approval of the Agenda.
That moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Sabios, second by Ms. Chahusky, and thank you, Mr. Tillman, good to hear you out there. We can hear you, so that's awesome. All right, are there any items to pull or discussion? I know I do have one, are there any others? All right, Ms. Applegate.
Mr. President, I'd like to pull item 14.34.
All righty, we are pulling item 14.34, correct?
Correct, thank you.
Because I had it written down a little bit different here, so I just wanted to make sure. It's 14.34 or 11.43?
Sorry, yes, correct, 11.43.
It is, okay, so we're pulling 11.34.
Thank you.
Now, thank you. All right, and then, any others? And I do have one item once everybody else is done. All right, so normally superintendent requesting commander would do this, but it is going to be me today. So, per interim Associate Superintendent, Mohammed Islam, he's requesting a change to consent item 11.5, Agreement with Lozano Smith. Request an effective date be changed from July 12th to July 1, due to a transportation issue that arose which required the use of Lozano Smith prior to the start of their original contract date. So, I'm asking to amend that when we get to that section. Are any other questions or discussion? Let's go ahead and vote on the amended agenda. Mr. Tillman, we'll have to have a verbal by you, sir. Vice President Tillman.
Aye.
All right, amended agenda carries, we'll go ahead and move on to 3.0, Public Comments. 3.1, Receive Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda within their subject-matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will provide it, no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Ms. Cunningham, do we have any in-person public comments?
We do not.
Thank you very much, and I believe we do have one online comment, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so let me take a look here, let's go ahead, and if she's on, welcome, Ms. Negretti, welcome, Ms. Negretti, if you can hear us.
Thank you for your time. I'm calling regarding a couple of things, and let's begin with the approval of the $7,000 per occurrence. When I, information that was attached to today's agenda, there wasn't much that states when does it begin, when does it end, and when they state per occurrence, and I would like more transparency as far as where is the total cost per AIC? Because when this was proposed to the board, and of course, it was mentioned to the public, it was supposed to be for cost savings, and even today, where we already have a superintendent in place, you are referring to Mr. Mohammed has that AIC, so I would like to see, before any of you approve it, that you actually have additional information that you're providing to the public, which would be how many occurrences, because this is just being named as per occurrence, $7,000. If you begin to add up the months, you're talking about what it could have been paid for an entire year of a classified employee per occurrence for each one of the AICs. So, before the board approves anything, I would like to have full transparency of what are we talking about, because any contracts that you have ever approved have always had a starting and ending date, and it has a clear amount, saying $7,000 per occurrence, it's not being transparent. The additional concern, I have a concern regarding Agenda Item 11.29, which is to contract with the Wade Church for the amount of $41,896.80 for two days. As you know, the Wade Church, it's literally right around the corner from the PDC building. When the PDC building was purchased, and hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent to, of course, modernize it, bring in furniture, do whatever, because it was said that it was going to be used as a training center. According to what we were told, the Board of Ed was not big enough to facilitate those trainings, so therefore, the old Sun building was purchased and converted into what is now being known as the PDC building. Why would then the district spend almost $1,000 for two days for a facility that's right around the corner from the PDC? And maybe if, let's say, the days are already booked for some other training, you still have other locations that are currently not being used because we already had classified staff that has had training at other sites. Because the schools are right now in the summer session or their summer break, those facilities are open. In the past, the Green Room at the Adult Education Center has been used, the MU Building or Cafeteria Building from Chavez has been used for trainings, you name it, there are too many high schools, too many sites, including the Board of Ed, which you've, you know, revamped that facility there, the room where you're holding the school board meetings, that should be able to be accessed, or perhaps even, I saw that the numbers were, they're expecting 800 in attendance, you know, that's what it, at least for what I read, you know, there's so many tables, so many chairs, they requested 800 chairs. If you have that big of a number for a training, if you really truly expect 800 people, why not use the PDC, or why not break it into two separate groups? Because that is an enormous amount of money when we continue to see that many schools still lack upkeep. I brought two years ago, their Royal Valley pool needs to be maintained better, you have broken tiles. You go to other sites, I mean, even Mr. Ariano can see the comparison between Redlands Unified District, the schools look beautiful, and our schools just look like in such shams. And so, I also want to know what is going on with the Agenda Item 11.45, which is the Contract for Power, which is Ms. Alba. The services that it states, which she's rendering to the public, which is to engage more parents. The services that it states, which she's rendering to the public, which is to engage more parents, doesn't that duplicate the services of what the staff that was supposed to be, you know, the resource centers for the parents, all that staff that you hired? Each high school was supposed to have, you know, the family engagement, all of this. To me, it sounds like you have two of the same, which that means that it's duplicating services with public funding. Why there is a need to have this contract continue to come back when it had already been recommended to not continue to have it back? And you have the staff that is providing those services for parents. What is the justification to spend that additional fund to renew that contract? If you could perhaps make those decisions and get additional information? Because you are doing what you're supposed to be doing when you question things. It's not about the person, it's about the public funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti. Alrighty, Ms. Cunningham, are there any other virtual comments to be heard?
No, that is it.
Okay, thank you very much. We will continue to move on then. Let me get back down. We'll be moving on to 4.0, closed session. 4.1, closed session, public comments. This is a time that members of the public can provide an opportunity to directly address the board about any item described under the closed session. Individuals with comments on any other subject matter of the board's jurisdiction may address those during the regularly scheduled public comments later in the agenda. Do we have any public comments?
We have none.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Cunningham. Then we will go ahead and recess to closed session on 4.2. Thank you. Alrighty, folks, we're going to come back into session from closed session and report out on the items we need to. And we will take a look at 5.1, approval of job description for the payroll manager.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman and then seconded by Ms. Chahusky. And maybe I need to wait for Karen and Katrin. Because they're not here. So any discussion on this while we are kindfully waiting and patiently waiting? So I moved a little too quickly. My apologies. All right, and then to bring us back up to speed, we're on 5.1, approval of job description, payroll manager. It was moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. There is no discussion, so we are at the time to vote. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Wyatt, I'm sorry. Are we doing the approval of the job description? Okay, thank you. I missed that. Hold on.
And then we did have an aye by Vice President Tillman. The remaining board members will need to vote electronically or verbally, however you want.
And it was moved by me, Karen.
And then seconded by Ms. Chahusky.
Mrs. Grande?
All right, motion carries. Move on to 5.2. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves and adopts the following students who are recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of correction in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they are recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
I'm moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chahusky, seconded by Ms. Sevaios. Any discussion? All right, hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.3. Lift of expulsion of students. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorized the remission of following student with identification number as indicated below to schools of San Diego Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chahusky, seconded by Ms. Sevaios. Any discussion? All right, hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 5.4. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorized expulsion and/or youth court modification, expulsion or rescinding the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of San Diego Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
I'm moved. Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chahusky and seconded by Ms. Sevaios. Any discussion? All right, hearing seen none. We'll go ahead and vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Okay, motion carries. 5.0, we'll move on to 5.5. Other closed session action. There is no other closed session action, so we'll move on to 6.0. Reports and comments by union organizations. 6.1, Samaria Teachers Association.
There is none.
All right, and move on to 6.2, California School Employees Association.
There is none.
6.3, Communication Workers of America.
There is none.
Thank you very much. 6.4, Samaria School Police Officers Association.
And there's none.
Alrighty, 4.4, move on to 7.0, mandated policy revisions. 7.1, board policy 1250, visitors and outsiders. The district is in process of updating board policy. Do not reflect the latest mandate of state and federal law language. Nor to facilitate the approval and adoption process, policies submitted with only mandated language revisions do not require going to policy subcommittee and can be adopted on the first reading.
I'm moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Sevaios, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Any discussion on 7.1? Hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 7.2. Board policy 13.12.3, uniform complaint procedure.
I'm moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Sevaios, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Any discussion on 7.2? All right, hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Grande?
Motion carries. Moving on to 7.3, board policy 5131.2, bullying.
So moved.
Been moved by Vice President Tillman.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Any discussion or questions on 7.3? All right, hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. All right, motion carries. Moving on to 7.4. Board policy 6145, extracurricular and co-curricular activities.
I'm moved. Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chahusky, seconded by Ms. Sevaios. Any discussion? All right, hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 8.0. Board policy bylaw discussion, first reading. Board policy 6161.1, selection and evaluation of instructional materials. The Board will review the revisions of BP 6161.1, selection and evaluation of instructional materials, as reviewed by the Policy Subcommittee on June 14, 2023. Revisions reviewed were lined out and/or in bold red. No other changes are recommended by the Policy Subcommittee members. In addition, revisions are required. They'll be made and submitted for final board approval in an upcoming board meeting if no changes are required. The Board is in agreement of BP 6161.1. Selection and evaluation of instructional materials can be adopted without a second reading.
I'm moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Sevaios, seconded by just Ms. Chahusky. Any discussion or questions about BP 6161.1?
President Wyatt, I just have a quick question. Are we adopting this or are we just approving for a first reading and bringing it back as a second?
I would believe it come out in a discussion right now. That's what I was looking for.
I'm okay with adoption right now.
All right, I'm looking for consensus then. I have consensus from Ms. Chahusky, Ms. Sevaios, Ms. Grande, and myself. Vice President Tillman?
Well, it really has to be included in the motion. So really, we should say the motion is to approve it. And then the second should confirm it, then we should vote on it.
All right, so we can amend our motion to say that we are approving Board Policy 6161.1 as amended and on the first reading.
Say, would you just say you're adopting it, not approving it?
Adopting it?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we...
Well, I move for adoption.
All right, so we have a second motion to accept as a...
A second for adoption on first reading.
All right, then we have a second for adoption. Noted discussion is needed. Let's go ahead and vote. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, motion carries. We will now move on to 9.0, reports and comments. 9.1, board members. And we will start to my left with Ms. Chahusky and then come back around to Ms. Marion Grande.
Thank you. I don't have a lot tonight. I'm just happy, I hope everybody had a great Fourth of July Independence Day celebration week. I attended the Youth Summit at the University of Redlands with some of our students and our staff, and they had a really great time and learned quite a bit around youth courts. I want to congratulate Anna Applegate on her recent award and honoring. That was well deserved, as always. And then I had the opportunity to go to the Extended Learning Summer Caps Program at Roosevelt, and they were building water slides. They were third graders. I also saw some first graders that were also doing STEM projects, but their STEM project was water slides. They had to be the cutest things as they were building these. And some of them were more simple, but one of the groups really got elaborate in their use of tin foil, paper cups, and tape to build these water slides. And then they were trying to put rubber duckies down the water slides, and it was just the cutest thing ever. So it made my former primary teacher heart very happy. But thank you. I hope everybody's having a great summer out there and a great vacation, and I'm looking forward to the start of the school year. Oh, and I'm attending the Safe Schools Conference this week, so I'm looking forward to also bringing back some great ideas from other districts and seeing what they're doing in terms of safe schools and what some of the trends are. And, you know, I know we do quite a bit, kudos to the folks that keep us safe, but I'm also looking to see if we can, you know, learn some more. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Chahusky, thank you very much. Ms. Marion Grande?
Yes, I really had a summer that's really packed full of different things. You know, I joined Rotary, and that's getting heating up. And I'm going to be inviting each and every one of you to be a guest speaker this year and also to bring your own people to listen to you. So we want to make sure you have a great audience and it gives you a great opportunity to speak to the community. And I know it's really helped me a lot, I feel, and getting more comfortable and getting up there and talk without, you know, staying focused on the subject. And also, I was really happy, this one event, I did go, is the ESY Program Completion Ceremony at the ICEC. That was earlier this month, and it was just very moving. It was one, they had three graduates, and one of them was their young man who worked very, very hard to complete the janitorial program there. And he is autistic and just remarkable at his presentation, how, you know, he moves and he handles himself. And there were so many people there so proud of, you know, John Caranza, many people from special ed. There was just, Belicia and I were both there. We were real excited. So I know she'd want me to share that with you. And then also, I do want to mention, only because, believe it or not, this person really was involved very much in not just our school district, but at Cal State. And you name it, Pam French, Pamela French passed away. And we had a celebration of life for her. Now, who she was, was, she was Rondi the Glass Man's wife, but she also, her business was Timeless Awards and Trophies. And you know that name because 20-some years ago, I started using her instead of another organization there because I really liked her. And together, we did the wordsmithing for many, many, many awards and things. And she's a very talented person to capture feelings and emotions and put them in the fewest words as possible and then etching them on there for posterity. So you go home and you look on the back of your plaque, and nine out of 10, I will tell you that it'll say timeless on there. And in the end, she did retire and sold the business to the people that worked for her. But she's still very much involved, would go in and check to see how things were. And she had everything you could have ever imagined to give as an award there. And if she, you didn't, if you couldn't think of it or find it, she would make it happen. I myself had one, my organization, this student body, had this made for me, this big plaque. And it had, you know, a little hammer and the thing. And then mine had a coyote on it, so it was engraved. It was beautiful, beautiful work. So I just want to share that with you. She's going to be very much missed. And herself, she was a character and a half, I have to tell you. I mean, she makes me look like, you know, very plain by comparison. She was very gregarious and laughing and always dancing. Two months before she passed away of her cancer that returned, they took pictures of her, and she was out there boogying on the dance floor. So she was like crazy. Nobody cried at her ceremony. Everybody was just laughing, thinking about her and all the things that she did. The church was sandals church, and it was packed, packed, every community, anyway, so that's mine.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Vice President Tillman?
Thank you very much. I would like for us to consider, I know it's the board that approved the calendar, but I kind of overlooked it until we got a bunch of calls from people. I guess it doesn't seem natural that we start the regular school year in July. I know it's just July 31st, but I have a lot of people who have so concerned about it. So I just want to put it out there, maybe for the next school calendar, we make sure we don't start sooner than August 1st. Just a thought, and I'm sure it'll come up and it'll be presented to the board at some point, and we can take it up there. But if it is going to be in July, yeah, just, I would like for somebody to just note that. So bring it to our attention so we can consider it. The other thing I want to give a special thank you to Dr. Rodriguez. I met a lady who works in a store, and she saw me in last year's Fourth of July parade. And because she knows in the school board, she told me about a concern she had about her daughter who was attending Cal Baptist, and the family was really struggling with paying for it. And I put her in touch with Dr. Rodriguez, and she was able to get us some help in going to San Diego Valley College and even a chance of getting a job. The young lady wants to be a teacher, so... So those type of things are a big deal to me. So I really want to say thank you very much, Dr. Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Sevaios?
Thank you. I just also want to, you know, wish everybody and hope they had an amazing Fourth of July and that they're having a great summer break as well. If you work during this time, please take some time off to kind of collect and rejuvenate. It's very much needed, self-care. In addition to that, I want to just say thank you to Youth Build, Inland Empire. They had sent out an email inviting me to their graduation ceremony that happened June 30th, which I was able to attend, and it was a really nice ceremony. So, you know, just wanted to share that as well as I look forward to tomorrow, where I'll be visiting the preschool with Dr. Rodriguez. So I look forward to that as well. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Sevaios. And we'll head back to me, I guess it is. So, and honestly, I don't have a lot to say myself this evening other than congratulations again to our, our student board members. That was really, really exciting to have them here this evening and just to see the glow on them. And it is quite a responsibility for them to take on and to represent the student body. And I heard some other folks too talk about developing leaders in our community. And I imagine some of those students will definitely be leaders in our community, if not here, leaders elsewhere or maybe in the workplace and society. So congratulations to them and then hopefully to our colleagues that aren't here. They're enjoying themselves on their tour right now, which I hope to someday go on. One of these years, if it's been eight years and I haven't been able to go yet because this is always the toughest time of the year for lesson education. But looking forward to a new school year. I know it's summertime and most of our kids are out there. And hopefully a lot of our staff taking a break and resting up and getting ready for a new year. So that is it for me. And I see my colleague, her light came on again. Since I only took 49 seconds, I'll go back to Ms. Grande. Ms. Grande?
Thank you. I forgot to ask for your prayers. I have signed up to do all five of the Governance Masters and Governance Courses this fall. So wish me luck. I've been out of college for a while there, but I still know how to read a book. So I'm, that with my Mr. Google that will help me, and I'm looking forward to that.
Is that in person or virtual?
In person. I, I can't sit that long because of my back and all that. So my husband and I figured out a way. His sister lives nearby Vista, so he's going to go there for the day and visit her. She's like eighty-five or seven or something, so time is precious. So I sold that idea. I'm done, I'm good.
Pretty young nowadays, isn't it, Ms. Grande?
Yes, yes, very young.
Ms. Grande, I'm sure you could teach that class.
What did he say? Yes?
I am sure you can teach that Master in Government class.
Thank you, sir. I will take note of that.
I'm excited for Ms. Grande, and I would encourage my colleagues to attend it as well. I, I did it myself, Masters in Governance. And it's quite a program. You get to also, again, meet colleagues from all over the state. And when I did it, they actually sent you all over the state, to different areas in the state, different offices.
Do they offer entertainment and food too?
Oh, boy, I don't remember. I just remember there was a lot of travel, a lot of study. But it was definitely well worth it. And again, I'm glad you're doing it, but I would definitely encourage my colleagues to do it.
Love learning.
Just another step in appropriate governance and what we do in being accountable and responsible for being a board member, so. And you can update us if there's anything new, how's that? All righty, well, thank you to my colleagues for all their comments. Nine point two, Superintendent Staff. We do not have a, a video from Mr. Ariano. He is enjoying his time off. Good for him, as well as some of our other executive cabinet members. And I believe he's also celebrating a birthday. So happy birthday to Mr. Ariano. We'll have to get him when he comes back. So we'll wish him a happy birthday right now, but then we'll cook him when he gets back. So that's always fun. Oh, gosh darn it, I'm in trouble. And we also have another birthday to celebrate, which is my colleague, Ms. Mickey Chahusky. We, we are celebrating her as well. So happy birthday, Ms. Chahusky. And we have a small crowd here, or, you know, we could maybe, I know you like to sing and have fun and stuff. And Ms. Grande maybe could sing it to you, but I'm sure she'd be more than happy to. But happy birthday to you as well and anyone else out there that may be celebrating a birthday anytime soon or just had one. How's that? So happy birthday to America as well. We'll move on to 10.0. Action Items and 10.1. I heard that, Ms. Chahusky. 10.1 Personnel Report, number one, dated July 11, 2023, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations. As presented? Oh, thank you, Dr. Funches.
I'm moved.
I heard it as, so moved. So moved by Ms. Chahusky, seconded by Ms. Sevaios. Any discussion on 10.1? Very good. Let's go ahead and vote. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, motion carries. Let's move on to 10.2. Sponsorship with California State University San Bernardino for Latino Education Advocacy Day's lead. Summit 12, Enough is Enough: Education Violence in the Context of Our Schools, Community Safety, and Law Enforcement. This summit is attended by various stakeholders that share a common interest and commitment to educational issues that impact Latinos. Sponsorship is not to exceed $5,000 and will be paid from the unrestricted general fund.
I'm moved.
So moved.
I can't.
It was moved by Ms. Sevaios, and we'll say seconded by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion on this? Oh, I'm sorry, was that Ms. Chahusky this time? Oh, it was moved by Ms. Chahusky and seconded by Vice President Tillman. Boy, I'm not making any points to Ms. Chahusky today. All right, any discussion? Many days. We'll make it up, Ms. Chahusky.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. AIC, Ms. Chahusky, that's all I'll say. All right, motion carries, very good. We'll move on to 10.3. Consideration of Approval for Stipend for Administrators in Charge. Let me get to that. Board approves a stipend amount of $7,000 per occurrence to be paid to the Associate Superintendent of Business Facilities, the Operation Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, and the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services in exchange for their service as administrators in charge of the district in absence of a district superintendent. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves a stipend of $7,000 per occurrence for the Associate Superintendents and each Assistant Superintendent Service as administrators in charge in the absence of a district superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, and we're going to say seconded by Ms. Grande. Good job, Ms. Grande. All right, any discussion or questions? And I will turn on my light. Is there anyone else? All right, Ms. Sevaios, thank you.
Yeah, so, so basically, some of the questions that I have are related to some of the questions that have been brought up through our public comment as well. And so I, I would like for there to be more clarity and transparency in terms of what was stated on the agenda. So the public, you know, can better hear and understand, you know, what's being presented and what we're voting on, for what reasons. Okay, and then I have a question, side note for you. Do we, after a discussion, do we move on to voting and then we move on to the next item? There's no further discussion after voting?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay, so I guess, um, I guess now is the time for me to mention my reasons why. I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote. So I just want to, I just want to say to our three Assistant Superintendents, again, as, as we have already mentioned in the past, thank you so much for the time that you stepped in and took over and just, you know, assisted with, with the running of the district while we, we didn't have a superintendent. This is one area and one topic that I have not always been in agreement with in terms of how that kind of came about. And so my vote for tonight, you know, will be, will be a no. But that does not mean that it's because I don't appreciate the work that you all have done. It's for other reasons that, you know, at this point, I don't think it's helpful to kind of go back and, and discuss it. I just want to make sure that you understand, though, that it, that it is nothing, you know, personal. I do appreciate the work that you've got, have done. I just have to stay true to myself, you know, moving forward with this particular item. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sevaios. Uh, Ms. Mar, oh, I'm sorry. Let me go to Ms. Chahusky here. I don't want to get in trouble again. All right, me? I usually go last, but Ms. Marion Grande, go ahead then. Oh, you want me to go? Both of you? My goodness gracious. All right, well, then I will go. I usually go last and defer that privilege. Just kidding. No, I kind of echo a little bit what Ms. Sevaios said. I definitely want to say thank you to, you know, our, our Assistant Superintendents and our Associate Superintendent for, for taking on the additional challenges and roles. And some folks may see it as just, you know, overseeing or just a daily thing, but there's a lot more that they do than you can imagine on a daily basis, just with their own jobs, let alone having to feel the many, many, many concerns that come about every day through the business of such a large urban district. So thank you to them. You know, for all transparency, I know we had some questions about when did this, the dates basically on it. And it started in July of 2022 with Mr. Solan, went to August to Ms. Applegate, September of 2022, Dr. Rodriguez, October 2022 to Dr. Funches, November 2022 to Mr. Solans, December 2022 to Ms. Applegate, January 2023 to Dr. Rodriguez, February 2023, Dr. Funches, March 2023 to Ms. Applegate, and then back to April 2023 for Dr. Rodriguez. The amounts for each individual of AICs. Dr. Rodriguez is three months, $21,000. Ms. Applegate, three months, $21,000. Mr. Solans, two months, $14,000. Dr. Funches, two months, $14,000. For a 10-month total of $70,000. So I know there were some concerns out there, and I do agree that we need to be transparent about the information that's shared and reported out to the public. And so hopefully that did cover some of the concerns that were out there. I am in agreement with the, the AICs receiving this particular stipend. And again, I do appreciate their services during a very challenging time for me as well as board president.
After the rotations, I wanted to have a comment on Dr. Wyatt.
Yes, sir, Vice President Tillman. All right, and we'll go over now to Ms. Chahusky.
Hey, Dr. Wyatt.
You're welcome, ma'am.
I support this motion. You know, I, we've talked about the fact that, that doing the AIC helped us not only save some money, but also helped us in our search and helped us be more, very thoughtful in our process. And I think the result of, of, of that whole process has been very beneficial to the district. In my various roles in the education community, I've always talked about, you know, extra work, extra pay. Being superintendent on top of the jobs that they already had was a lot. It, it was a lot of extra hours and a lot of extra time for them. And they were still responsible for their individual departments. And so I appreciate the, that fact. And, you know, I will always advocate, you know, if you're doing the extra work, you need to get the extra pay for all of our employees. And so for that reason, I, I don't think it applies to just some. I think all applies to all. And so I am going to support this motion. I think, I, I think it is, is worthwhile. And I, and I think that they did the work to earn this and, and supported and kept our district going in a positive direction while the board, you know, decided on how they were going to search for a superintendent and, and, and went through that hiring process. So thank you to all of you and to Mr. Solans out there for, for, for doing that and for leading our, our district. It's not easy when you're, you know, running those departments and, you know, each of you are taking a turn, and you still managed to help us stay pretty seamless in leadership. So I'm grateful for that.
Thank you, Ms. Chahusky. Ms. Marion Grande?
Well, I feel comfortable supporting it because, largely due because the way it was broken down thought by thought, item by item, by our own superintendent. He sent a, a very good, I don't know, framework of the well. I mean, I'm not real big on accounting or finance, all this, but it was made crystal. And he used very transparent wording and interpretation conversation. And I wish that maybe Ms. Negretti could see something like that more than just this simple, it looks so simple, okay, they get this, they did that. And, and Dr. Aureliano did not do that. He, he really looked at the thoughts behind it and how he compared and contrasted salaries of surrounding areas. And even right now where they are, they're, they're not, they don't meet, they don't get paid as much as those other AIs in surrounding. And we have 50,000 students. And it's just not, it's, you know, well, anyway, I, I, I support this. I'm, I'm comfortable that it would hold up to the daylight. So that's why I'm saying just, if she could see what we saw, then, then it's good.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. And I would agree that information was, was outstanding by our superintendent, Mr. Aureliano. All right, Vice President Tillman?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I really want to thank the Assistant Superintendents who stepped in and did a great job when we were transitioning from one superintendent to the next. I want the public to know, I actually took the lead in the suggestion of using our existing administrators to fill in the superintendent position. And I did that because I've had this experience in the past. I was there when we went from Dr. Roberts, and then after we went from Dr. Delgado, and after we went from Doc, Dr. Marsden. And I, I experienced hiring an outside interim superintendent. I guarantee you, for that period of time, it would have cost at least $150,000. And the problem with hiring someone from the outside, they don't have buy-in. All the people who served as interim, I shouldn't say all, but majority of them are still here. And because of that, they had a vested interest. And I can tell you for a fact, they were doing superintendent duties. So I can't thank them enough. And I think the district got a great deal and made the right decision in hindsight. So thank you very much, and I support this item 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. And I did turn my light on again, which is kind of breaking my own rules. But I really wanted to emphasize, because I didn't remiss not to mention one other item about cost. And my colleagues reminded me about that in their comments. And, you know, everybody was really focusing on, you know, we didn't have a superintendent at the time. But we also didn't have a deputy superintendent, and we also did not have another assistant superintendent job that existed at that time. So we had three vacant executive cabinet positions. That is huge. So our AICs not only just took on superintendent duties, they also took on the deputy superintendent duties as well as the existing assistant superintendent position that we had at that time. So like my colleagues have said, I cannot say thank you to them enough. I know what it's like to wear two, three, four, five hats, and they wore multiple hats, not just two, but multiple hats. And yeah, my compliments to them. And Vice President Tillman, I do agree with you. You know, we, we put our faith and trust in our own, our folks that know our district, that are from our district, that if you put their experience together, probably is somewhere between 60 and 70, just the three of them sitting here today. But if we have Mr. Solans as well, we're probably well over 80 years of experience to 80, 90 years of experience, but just 60 to 70 years of experience right here in our hometown, our city, our district. So I am full supporter of this, and those are my final comments. At this time, I believe we've had comments and any other questions or concerns or comments? Okay, if hearing none and seeing none, then we will go ahead and take a vote. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. And then we'll vote electronically. All right, motion carries for one. And again, just thank you to our AICs and thank you for being patient as well with the process and the compensation. I know it's been quite some time, but in respect to process and our community and listening to them, you know, we wanted to be as transparent as possible and respectful to them too. So thank you. All right, we'll move on to 11.0, Consent Items. 11.1 Approval for Consent Items.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Sevaios. Any discussion or items to be pulled? I believe we did pull 11.34, correct? That was, that was pulled, right?
Yes, that was pulled.
All righty. Any others that need to be pulled? All righty, any others that need to be pulled for discussion? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. 11.5, I, you know, we need to, we do need to, I didn't mention that at the beginning, 11.5. So let's, we'll go ahead and pull 11.5 and vote on that separately. So we actually removed 11.34 from the consent agenda, and then I will pull 11.5 for further discussion. No, this is the time, Ms. Savios. This is discussion or questions? Oh, yes, ma'am, definitely right now.
I, I did have a question in regards to that item 11.29. Just to get a little bit more clarity.
Okay, then, if you, I think right now we pull it then for discussion. I'm sorry.
Okay, yes.
I said, we want to pull 11.29?
Yes, please.
All right, sorry about that. My apologies. So let me make sure I have them written down.
Dr. Wyatt, you don't want to pull, you don't want to pull 11.33?
Give me a second there, Vice President Tillman. 11.33. I thank you, Vice President Tillman. I will just recuse myself since it's a no cost, but thank you for 11.33.
Yeah, the only way you can refuse yourself is to pull it.
All right, then I will pull 11.3, I mean abstain. I meant abstain, sorry.
Right, so we have to pull it till abstain though.
All right, so I'll pull 11.33, since I am an employee of Samuel County Superior Schools, K-12 workforce program, no cost. So now we have 11.5, 11.29, 11.33, and then again, 11.34 was removed. Did we get that, Ms. Cunningham? Thank you for seeing that, Vice President Tillman.
No problem.
I have that written down. Pulled 11.5, 11.29, 11.33. And removed 11.34. Are we good? All righty, let's go ahead and vote on the amended consent agenda then. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. On this, who motioned?
Well, I don't know, but I, so moved.
Second.
Motioned by?
It was, it's already been moved in second. That's why we.
Yeah, I know.
We moved in second.
No, we moved in second, and we're just trying to figure out who it was.
Oh, so I think I moved.
All right, so I thought Vice President Tillman moved and then seconded by Ms. Savios. There we go. Thank you very much. Did we get that, Ms. Cunningham? All right, so now we can vote. Mr., Vice President Tillman was an aye, and then the rest of us will vote electronically. If we need to. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to, looks like 11.5. Let me get there. All right, 11.5, agreement with Lazzano Smith on that one there. And I will do a quick readout on what we needed to do. I did read it at the beginning of the meeting, but I will read it once again. Per interim Associate Superintendent Mahana Islam is requesting change consent item 11.5, agreement with Lazzano Smith. Requesting effective date be changed from July 12th to July 1st due to a transportation issue that arose, which required the use of Lazzano Smith prior to the start of their original contract date.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Ms. Chahusky, seconded by Vice President Tillman. Any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Vice President Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Hey, motion carries. We'll move on to 11.29. Facility Use Agreement with the Way World Outreach Church. Use of facilities to hold a 2023 Summer Professional Development Conference for all elementary and secondary certificate staff. This conference will provide teachers with necessary professional development and tools to support all district students for the new school year.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Discussion or questions?
Just a quick question.
Ms. Savios?
Just wondering of the rationale of contracting outside and not looking to do it, you know, within the facilities of the district?
I believe Assistant Superintendent Ms. Applegate has a quick answer for you.
Thank you, President Wyatt. Those are two days of professional development for all the teachers in the district. So it's 1,500 teachers one day and approximately 1,700 the next day. There are no venues that would hold that in our district, no matter what. PDC maybe holds maybe 700. So we're not even close. And normally, we would try to contract within our city so we can bring the business here. And that was one that was available. At times, we've done it at the Ontario Convention Center, but they were actually booked two years out. So we were pretty much in a jam for that.
Thank you so much for that explanation.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you, Ms. Chahusky. I mean, thank you, Ms. Applegate. Ms. Chahusky?
I believe too, like, we've used at Cusless Arena, we've used Santos, and we've used the Orange Show in different times because we don't have a space large enough to hold everybody. So we have, there is precedent in, in, for using other facilities as we can find to hold these end services. And that's, I've been as an employee back in the day.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chahusky. And I'll just add, you know, I know sometimes we do have to go outside our facilities based on size and need, and I'm just happy that we've kept it in our community. You know, I know I'm really big on that, as well as I imagine the rest of the board that if we're going to contract with anybody, we contract people right here in San Bernardino. So I do appreciate the Way World Outreach Church and partnering with us on our professional development days. So if there are any other discussions or concerns or questions, let's go ahead and vote. Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 11.33. All right, and on this one is, I will be abstaining due to being an employee with Samuel County Superior Schools. It is a no-cost contract, however, I will abstain. Vice President Tillman? All right.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. All right, motion carries 4-0. And we will move on now to, I think it's almost that time. It is, 12.0, 12.1. Summary of Board Members' Requests, Review of Requests, and I believe that'll be Ms. Ballantag. Thank you.
We only have one request for tonight, and that is from Mr. Tillman. He would like to have the district's calendar committee to note not to start school sooner than August 1st, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to our colleagues for only having one item for our staff to have to look at and address in the next couple of weeks and give them a little bit of a break. All right, it's 13.0, meaning adjournment. 13.1, adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Vice President Tillman's motion. Seconded by Ms. Chahusky. I don't think we need to vote on that one because it is unanimous, right? Aye, aye, aye. And let's go ahead and adjourn, and thank you again to my colleagues, to executive cabinet, our guests who have stayed the entire meeting. Please try to enjoy what little summer we have left. The new school year will be here before you know it. I mean, it really will be here before you know it. We're just weeks away from being there. But again, enjoy the summer, stay cool, hydrate, safe drive home, and God bless you all. Thank you.